Meeting of the Howard Planning Board to order. The date is February 13, 2018. It's about 6:34. We have two people on speaker. Alan is on his way in and he'll be here shortly. And David is listening from sunny Florida, much to everybody's delight. First and foremost, anybody that would, that wants to tape or video, video or audio this meeting will have to notify the Chair that they're doing it. It's, it's being recorded now on television. For anybody that didn't know, just notify us if you're going to do it. The first item on the agenda is a continuation of PB 2017-32. Joshua and Jason.
McNevich.
Thank you, McNevich. I didn't want to massacre that. And this was read into the record at the last meeting, so I need not read this into the record. I think first and foremost, Charlene.
Actually, I was just going to remind the board that because we do have board members on the phone, that any votes are going to have to be roll call votes.
Okay.
And I would defer initially to the applicant to make their presentation.
Go ahead, gentlemen. Let us know who you are and get to work.
I'm David McNevich with Coastal Engineering Company. I'm here with Rick Hamlin, who's the owner of the property this evening. Jason and Joshua are also sitting in back of me. And so I'll proceed. So the property is located at 45 Main Street, on Main Street Extension. And it's a vacant parcel now. There is an overgrown cranberry bog at the rear of the property. The property is zoned industrial limited, vacant industrial land to both the west and the east and to the south. Across on the northwest side of the property is the state highway layout, Route 6. And to the northeast across Main Street is a residentially zoned lot, and there's an existing house on that property.
David, I also have it up on a PowerPoint. If the larger one works, works a little bit better.
Sure.
You can use your laser pointer or your fingernail.
Too much technology.
I'll try to speak from the Chair and then if there's anything that needs to be pointed out, we can do that. So in looking at the development of the property, because there is a wetland in back, there's a wetland buffer zone, 100 feet jurisdiction for the Conservation Commission. And then also a 50-foot no disturb zone for the Conservation Commission, which is the line in red on that display. And the proposal is to build a 6,000-square-foot contractor use of building, six bays, essentially six sections with overhead doors and, and passage doors into them. As you're probably very familiar with, there are a number of these on Queen Anne Road as well as just around the corner from this property. Because of the residential, because of the house to the northeast, it was a design consideration to locate the building on the property such that the back of the building is facing towards that residential use. And so that the overhead doors and all of the activity is to the west, southwest of the building, so that that residential property can be screened by the building itself. Plus, there's a landscape plan that was in your packet also. The intent is to, to landscape between the building and Main Street to also help screen that residential property to the northeast. The, the services to the building would be water, electric, telephone, communication, eventually gas when the moratorium is lifted. We are showing a location for the future or the gas line that would be proposed on that. The utilities come in on the northeast side of the building. Septic system is behind the building. It's designed to comply with Title V State Environmental Code and Town of Harwich Board of Health Regulations for Septic System Design. Stormwater systems have been designed in compliance with the Town of Harwich requirements and mass stormwater standards. I did see a comment letter, review letter, from the Engineering Department that indicated that they found that the design was in compliance with the regulations and, and felt that the stormwater from the property would be handled appropriately. And we're showing parking, some parking spaces out along Main Street or the pavement along Main Street, and then some down in the southwest corner of the property. And then also some parking in the, in the bays themselves. You were provided also with some architectural plans for the, for the buildings. It's a metal building, again, as is typical of this type of, of use. And I think at this point, that would conclude. I did notice the police chief had made a comment about site distance from the driveway to the east. There is a, a distance away, there is a, I won't say a sharp turn, but there is a turn in the road. And his comment was just to make sure that there was adequate, that the driveway was designed such that the access was easy to maneuver and also that the site distance was maintained. We do note on the, on the site plan that I believe there's more than 300 feet of site distance to that corner that the police chief was stating in his, his letter. So we have adequate site distance in both directions. And we've designed it such that even though the, the, the building and the pavement in front of the building will be lower than Main Street, it, it's designed so that it's maneuverable for contractor-type vehicles. So that driveway would not be too steep for access by larger vehicles. At that, I think I'll open up to...
I do want to thank Mr. McNevich. At the last meeting, I had prepared a staff report and I had some things that were a little bit out of kilter. And he took advantage of the extra two weeks to revise the plan so that the plan is, is now in compliance with all the requirements under zoning. Just a couple of things that I did want to, to bring up relative to the fact that the parking is based on industrial and it's based on light industrial and manufacturing, which does require one parking space per employee in the maximum shift, plus one space for 2,500 square feet. Before the meeting, I did have a brief conversation with the owner of the property and, and Mr. McNevich that at a max, they would only have eight employees. That still need, requires the need for 11 parking spaces. They do show 13 outside. I know that they do want to be parking some of their equipment, which may be either, you know, their, their landscaping trucks or some types of trailers there. If they did want to do that, they do have two extra spaces based on if they're going to change the number of employees on their maximum shift. However, if there is going to be additional outside storage, they would need to show that. If they're not going to do any outside storage, then I think the plan as presented is, is adequate. They have noted on the plan that storage, trash disposal and trash storage will be taken in care of internally and will be the, and there will be no dumpster so that the unit occupants are going to have to deal with their own trash. In the event that a dumpster does show up, we would ask them to come in and comply with what is required under zoning, which includes it not being in a parking space, that it does be on some kind of a pavement or a concrete pad, and that it does be enclosed. I did look at the Google Earth and there are definitely no driveways within 100 feet. And at that, I have no further comments except to say that as presented right now, it does meet all the minimum requirements under zoning.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions?
I have nothing.
Hi, this is David Harris, I have a question.
Go ahead, David.
On the site plan that shows the contour of the, the, the south end of the building and in the southwest corner, the southeast corner of the building, have a very steep grade there. It drops about eight feet and 15 feet, approximately. And on the landscaping plan, I was unable to, to decipher the indication of what you proposed to plant here to hold that slope. Can you explain that, please?
Sure. So the contours that you see on the plan as proposed in front of you, that slope is one and two, which is a, a stable slope for sandy materials. The landscape plan calls for a conservation seed mix. That, that portion of the property, south of or down on the page from the blue line, which is the 100-foot wetlands buffer zone, is within conservation jurisdiction. And the plant material that would be within the buffer zone has to be native-type plants there. So what's, was proposed here is a conservation seed mix. We've had one meeting with the Conservation Commission and we will be going back to them on the 21st, I believe. And they've asked us to provide some more plant materials there, shrubs. There's a heavy blueberry population throughout the upland portion of the lot now. We're going to be transplanting some of that into that area as well to enhance that conservation seed mixture. And right now, it looks like the, the Conservation Commission wants that retaining wall extended along the south side of the building to reduce the amount of grading there and keep more in undisturbed area. And we're going to be doing that. It's just an extension of the wall along the south side of the building there to eliminate some of that proposed grading.
That answer the question?
I think that's a much, I think that's a much better solution. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Harry Nunn, are there any comments from the public? No comments from the public? Charlene?
If the wall is going to get extended, we would need to have a revised site plan.
Okay.
So not really, I, if through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the, Mr. McNevich, a question.
Go ahead.
Are you going to need to show an outdoor storage area?
I don't know that we need to at this time, based on now the understanding that there be eight maximum employees. But if, if this is, you know, if this were not going to be acted on this evening, we would come back with the, with the wall and show some just in the odd chance that they would want to expand.
The only reason I bring up the outside storage, you can park your vehicle there. So if you have your landscape vehicle there, if there's other equipment that's not a vehicle, technically under the bylaw, you're not supposed to park it unless you have it marked as outside storage.
The intent is to store those types of pieces of equipment outside.
Okay, so, you know, it's, it's up to the board whether they want to either continue this, to allow for a revised site plan, to show the, the wall and the outside storage, or to condition it that, you know, they have to do that plan. Personally, I would prefer to get a revised plan before the board makes a decision, but it's entirely up to you.
Jim, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Charlene that I would rather continue this, get a revised plan, and then vote on that revised plan.
I don't agree with Charlene, but if it's the will of the board, fine. I, I just don't want to hang them up. You don't have any, you haven't started anything there, have you?
No, no.
No, they're just missing, you know, some contingency dates, but, you know, we'll work with them.
Could we ask...
Does conservation require a, a plan before they approve it, or have they given a conditional approval?
We're, we're, no, they, they're, they're going to need a revised plan, which we're going to submit to them tomorrow.
So if, if, if that's the case, and you meet with them on the 21st, and you can come back here on the 27th, that'd be the plan you have, if that's okay?
Move to continue it to 27th.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. McCarland, seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Continue the meeting until the next scheduled meeting on February 27, 2018.
No earlier than 6:30 PM.
Six, no, no earlier than 6:30 PM. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Who seconded, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. I have to have a, I have to have a roll call.
Oh, you do a roll call, yes.
Okay, David will stop, David gets the vote. Charlene?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Me too. Thank you.
See you then.
See you in two weeks. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another continued item. Even Nancy Morris, care of Don Speakman, talking about 11 Oliver Snow Road. Step right up. This was read into the record at the last meeting, so we're good there. Charlene, would you like to make any comments first?
No, I defer to Mr. Speakman to do a presentation.
Right ahead.
Good evening, Dan Speakman. With me is Nancy Morris, the owner. Michael Coppoli is the fellow that's going to build and occupy the building. So the property is located on number 11 Oliver Snow Road in Harwich. It's a 1.43 acre parcel. It's in the RR zoning district. Presently has a three-bedroom ranch-style home, covering a net 1,764 square feet as the principal structure, which is occupied by the owner. We're requesting to construct a 725-square-foot one-bedroom accessory apartment, remote from the principal structure, as shown on our site plan. This petition conforms to all your zoning regulations and we're in compliance, I think, with pretty much everything. We've requested waivers as shown on the application. I think if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Charlene, you still, you'd like to speak now?
Yep. I actually don't have many comments on this at all. The filing meets all the requirements. Staff recommends approval of all the waivers requested, which are the general waivers that are required for commercial application. We're actually going to make a proposal to you to change that, so we aren't making waivers. The only thing was, there's a full basement below the apartment. This should not be used for anything but storage. No habitable state should be created in the basement. And that's pretty much going to be dictated to by the, the Board of Health as well. So I have absolutely no other comments regarding this. It's a lovely-looking building.
Members of the board?
This, David Harris, is the, is the intent to rent this annually or seasonally?
Actually, I can answer that. The Morrises will live in the main house and Mr. Coppola will live in this, this apartment. So it's, it's going to be rented annually.
Okay. Any other questions?
Although his mom just said he's really not going to rent it.
He'll be, he'll be paying a dollar a year. If there's no questions, we board any questions from the public? Rush to the microphones. Hearing no questions from the public?
Move to close.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
Roll call.
Oh, roll, yeah.
Oh, roll call. David?
Aye.
David, aye. James?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, that being said, any against? No, obviously not. It's unanimous.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the parcel is in the RR zoning district. Two, the apartment unit is not greater than 900 square feet, being 725-plus or minus square feet. Three, it is the owner's intent to continue to reside and occupy the main dwelling on the property. Four, minimum requirements have been met for setbacks area and bulk. Five, the driveway and garage will provide sufficient street parking, which meets the minimum requirements. Six, the application is submitted does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll.
Okay. David?
Larry, this is all my fault, Larry. I apologize for making your credit.
What's the temperature there, David?
Don't tell us.
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Can, can you go back to the voting on the waivers? Joe?
Yeah.
The applicant is seeking...
Vote, vote to adopt the following waivers, that the applicant is seeking waivers and/or modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations as the requirements for submittal are not pertinent to a residential structure. That is, light landscape plans. And the motion is to approve the waivers and/or modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations as the requirements for submittal are not pertinent to a residential structure, i.e. landscape plants, et cetera.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McCarland, seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Any discussion? David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Should I should be the captain? Aye, aye. Okay.
Finally, to approve with conditions, the use special permit or waivers pursuant to 400-6 waiver of rules and regulations, requesting for the attached accessory apartment based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of Town of Harwich with the above findings and following conditions. One, the owner shall maintain occupancy in one of the units as required by Town and Code. Two, the basement shall not be used or improved for habitable living space. Three, the approval shall be conditioned to the Board of Health requirements for a septic system permit to expand leaching and add another septic tank as proposed. Four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McCarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Any discussion? All in, oh, David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
Aye for me. Unanimous. That being the case, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Get out of the house.
That's on the record.
That's beautiful.
The next item on the agenda is PB 2018-01, Outer Cape Health Services, the applicant. And for this item, I will be recusing myself because I'm on the Board of Directors.
Okay, so as...
Mr. Atkinson will be...
So as Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, I would like to open this public hearing for PB 2018-01. Outer Cape Health Services, as applicant, care of Eliza Cox Esquire, representative, Building Down the Road LLC owner, seeks approval of a site plan review special permit with waivers with certain site improvements and a use special permit for structures greater than 7,500 square feet to establish a medical clinic/office. The applicant is, the application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and subsection 55. The property is located at 710 Route 28, MAP 15, Parcel K2, in the C-V and R-R zoning district. Is there a spoken for the applicant?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Thank you.
Now, what I would like to do is, could we potentially set the easels in a manner that people in the audience can also see them? And if anybody's, you just put them at an angle.
Maybe to the other side of the audience.
Yeah, and if anybody in the audience is having trouble seeing them, I think if you move to the other side of the audience, it would be easier. So if you could just sort of angle the, the easels a little bit.
Can you be able to see, is it this far? I mean, part of the...
No, no. What I'm concerned about is people in the audience over there seeing it. Because this is directed just at the planning board and nobody in the audience can see what you're talking about. So something like that, yes.
Better?
Yeah. And again, if people in the... Well, if anybody wants to, they can always move to the other side and get a better view. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now you can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish in Hyannis. I live in Wellfleet, so not too far from here. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Outer Cape Health Services. Joining me this evening is Pat Nadle, who's the CEO of Outer Cape Health. You'll hear from her shortly. Ed McManus, who you all probably already all know, who's the Vice President of the Board for Outer Cape. Virginia Branch is seated to my right. She's the architect from DBVW Architects. And Brad Malo, who's a civil engineer from Coastal Engineering, is also here this evening. We want to thank you for your time this evening. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll walk you through. You'll hear from both Virginia and Pat during the course of the presentation. As many of you will recall, we were informally before the board in January, last month, on January 9th, and appreciated the comments and preliminary feedback that we've gotten, which we've tried to incorporate into the presentation, but appreciated very much the opportunity to appear informally last month. Charlene, can I have you click the next slide? Thanks. Close the door. Okay. So the first slide on the screen is a shot from Google Earth that shows the subject property, which is located right here. It's a site you all are probably familiar with. Here's Route 28 to the south, Hoyt Road to the north, and Saco Tucket Harbor across the street on Route 28. The site was originally constructed in its current configuration in the late 80s and permitted and occupied by Thompson's Farm Market. After Thompson's Farm Market vacated the site, it was acquired by the current owner of the property and used for a short period of time by back office associates, and then has largely been vacant until Outer Cape began to occupy the site last year. The existing conditions plan is shown here behind me. The site is, it's 1.92 acres. As I mentioned, it has frontage on both Hoyt Road and also on Route 28. The Hoyt Road frontage is gated. That was a requirement of the original permit that was issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals back in the late 80s that allowed for construction. We've had, been in communication since filing this application with both the Police Department and the Fire Department about how they want that gate locked. And we're prepared to put a Knox box in with access so that they can get in through that back entrance if needed. The site is developed with a two-story structure that's about 32,000 square feet. It was constructed circa 1989. The second floor is presently occupied by Outer Cape Health Services for office functions. They've been in there almost a year. They moved in to the second floor in March of 2017. And they use it for sort of back office functions, such as their call center, their finance department, their HR department, their IT department, medical billing, their development office, and their marketing office. The first floor, which is largely the subject of this application, is presently vacant. The property is located in two zoning districts, the RR and the CV. The majority of the site from basically this yellow line on the plan down towards 28 is all commercial. And then this small triangular portion is located in the RR zoning district. There's a prior zoning board of appeals... There's a prior zoning board of appeals decision, which I'll reference in just a moment, um, that permitted commercial parking within that RR portion of the property. And as you'll see on the proposed conditions, that's not proposed to be changed with this project. Uh, the property is also within the flood plain. It's within the AE flood plain, uh, for elevation eleven, and as Virginia will describe in a few moments, there are some flood mitigation measures that are also proposed in connection with this use. Um, in addition, there are numerous site improvements on the property, um, including sewage disposal systems, uh, utilities, stormwater drainage, landscaping both within the parking lot and along the property's perimeter. There are presently ninety-four paved parking spaces, uh, the access egress that I mentioned, as well as the emergency access on Hoyt Road. And there's also, um, a walkway that leads from roughly the main entrance of the building to the property's frontage on Route twenty-eight and connects to a crosswalk, uh, that extends across Route twenty-eight. Um, you can flip to the next slide. There are numerous existing permits that presently benefit the property. They were outlined in our submittal. Um, they're listed on the screen to my left. Uh, the original permit from the board of appeals in nineteen eighty-nine, which permitted, um, a building in excess of seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, there was a height variance for the sort of tower portion of the structure. Um, there was a nineteen ninety variance for the width of the curb cut on Route twenty-eight, which we're not proposing to change with this project. Um, in nineteen ninety-one, uh, both the board of appeals and this board acted. It was the first time that the planning board reviewed the project. Uh, the zoning board in, uh, July of ninety-one, um, granted both variance and special permit relief to allow, as I had mentioned previously, for the commercial parking within the RR portion of the property, uh, some site change relief, site coverage relief, and to allow for non-conforming parking islands. In August, a month later, the planning board also reviewed and approved those changes, as well as some very small additions to the building. And then the most recent action by, uh, any board in this town relative to the site was in, uh, two thousand fifteen, when the board allowed, this board allowed a mobile food truck to operate on the site. Um, there's a condition in the suggested staff report that that relief be rescinded, and that's something Outer Cape is comfortable with you doing as part of any action on the project. Next slide. Um, the ownership and applicant structure, um, the property is, was mentioned in the hearing notice, is owned by About Building Down the Road LLC. The applicant is Outer Cape Health Services. I'll allow, um, Pat Nadle, ask her to come up and talk for just a moment and a minute. Um, but Outer Cape has standing by virtue of a lease agreement that they entered into in August of twenty sixteen with the property owner. Um, that lease agreement allows for a ten-year lease with Outer Cape having the ability to have two, uh, extensions of ten years each, so for a total term of thirty years under the lease agreement. Um, we also submitted as part of the application materials correspondence from the property owner authorizing Outer Cape to make this application before you. Um, what I'd like to do now is ask, uh, Pat maybe to come up to the microphone, if she would, and just say a few words about the organization. They've been in Harwich, so you're probably somewhat familiar with them, but just talk a little bit for a moment about the work they do, um, the demand for this site, and why this is an important project to the organization and to our community. Sure.
Thank you, Eliza. Good evening. Thank you for having us back tonight. We're really excited to be at this point in the project and presenting, um, a lot more detail to you about the plans. We are, um, you know, we've been in Harwich for the last six years on Chatham Road in that little five-room, um, space. The last time I was here, I sort of quoted, we put over thirteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand visits through that site last year. So it's, um, it's a little tight, and, um, it does tell us about the demand for services. We get calls every day from this community and many other communities looking for access to, um, the most, mostly primary care services, but some of the other specialties that we're, we rotate through, we have some behavioral health services in there as well as prenatal care. So clearly for us, this is a real opportunity to create space that is adequate for the needs of the community, is able to provide the access that they are looking for, and, um, and be able to, um, really help us to coordinate some of the care that we have right now in fragmented places. So this service, as, um, as part of Outer Cape Health Services, will be looking to put a pharmacy right in the space, which will be very good for a one-stop, write the prescription, electronically goes over to the pharmacy, you pick it up on your way out, you'll have lab services right in the building. We do not have that now. So that will be very efficient and effective. So we really appreciate the fact that, um, you're contemplating approval of the, of the process that we're asking for tonight. So, questions? I can provide any more insight about us?
Joe, let's finish, let them finish their presentation, and then we'll get to questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Next slide. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to ask Virginia to walk through the proposed changes to the project, which really consist of sort of three components, um, that are listed on the screen, and, and Virginia will get into them in more detail, and then I'll sum up the waivers that we're requesting.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's okay if I block the screen. No. You're gonna need a microphone? I will. You did last night.
Hello. Um, essentially, we look at this project as an interior fit-out of an existing building. Any impacts that we're making to the site are largely driven by, uh, the necessity to create an accessible route into the building and also to protect the building from flooding. Uh, regarding the site, we're increasing, can everybody see this? This is the existing conditions plan, and then this is our proposed changes. So we're increasing the number of handicapped accessible spaces by locating them all in this tray. Um, we're creating a new, we're, we're infilling an existing recessed loading area in order to create an, an ambulance pickup and loading and trash enclosure where none currently exist. We're, um, replacing in the back elevation, an existing ground-mounted, um, generator, and this one will have sound attenuation baffle. We're creating, um, paving a small walk to, to create a paved egress from existing exit stairs from the building. Currently, it's a grass and gravel path. Um, the, the biggest change that we're making here really is creating a drop-off zone for what will be the main entrance to the clinic at existing doors that are located here. Um, and we're, we're doing that by removing a portion of a paved area that, um, I mean, largely this entire area is paved with brick pavers and asphalt. And I have some photos, if anybody needs, um, this, uh, to look at what's existing. But we're removing a portion of this paved area to create a planting bed and elevating the, the walk up to the building because the entrance, the existing entrance is actually a step up. So we're taking advantage of creating an, an entrance with a curb and a, a ramp from the, the asphalt parking to get us an accessible level entrance into the building. Uh, largely, the existing plantings, sight lighting, um, trees and curb cuts, um, onto existing streets remain. We are, um, setting aside a budget to plant the new planting bed that we've created at the front of the building and just some patching into areas where we're moving small areas of paving. We're, we're not, we're proposing no changes to the existing stormwater runoff or drainage systems, and we're, as, as Eliza said, we're utilizing the existing septic system. Let me move to the first floor.
Is the parking area or any of the, any of the sealed surface area increased? If you're not changing?
No.
Excuse, excuse me, Jim, can we let them finish their presentation, and then we can ask all the questions?
Okay.
I remember that question.
I will try. The existing first floor is largely open space. There's very few partitions.
Okay. You know what I'm after.
And the second floor, where Outer Cape's offices currently are located, is, is not, will not be impacted, except that we are adding, we are removing an existing, uh, service elevator, loading elevator, and installing a new passenger elevator. So by creating an accessible entrance at the front door, we have an accessible route through the building to our new elevator, making the second floor accessible now, where So the, the new, uh, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty square foot health center will provide sixteen exam rooms and two behavioral health consult rooms surrounding, uh, two team-based nurse stations and ample supports. So you enter the lobby here, uh, reception, and then back into the clinic this way, and these are the two nurse stations with exam rooms, uh, circling that area. Um, adjacent to reception, we have a small pharmacy, which is about six hundred square feet, and then a small laboratory for in-house, um, samples that is about three hundred square feet. The, the lobby, um, we chose, we've selected this area because it's, it's already, um, very well lit with windows, and we're, we're trying to work with the existing building as much as we can. There's a area in the back that's about thirty-four hundred square feet that will remain undeveloped, um, and, and there are no plans to develop it at this time. Regarding floodproofing, the, the building does fall within the FEMA, um, two thousand fourteen flood hazard zone, where base flood elevation is eleven feet. The finished floor of the, of the building is at ten feet. The design flood elevation, if we were to build a new building here, would be at twelve feet, so one foot above base flood. We have ceiling limitations, and especially in this part of the building, we have, um, existing underside of structures at nine foot eight. So obviously, we're not able to raise the floor that additional two feet, um, and still maintain usability of, of a large portion of our building. So the building code allows for us to, because we're a commercial building, to, um, locate within the flood zone as long as we, um, drive flood-proof the building. So to accomplish that, we're installing a horizontal waterproof membrane across the entire building, and then above that, on top of that, we'll be pouring a four-inch topping slab, and that's to assist with hydrostatic pressure from any floodwaters. The majority, if you can, you can see the heavier lines around the perimeter of the building are already concrete block wall, which has a, um, a structural benefit to floodwaters. So our approach has been to remove the lower portion of wood frame walls that are at the front of the building. We're removing about three feet of the bottom part of the wall where it's wood stud and installing underneath it a concrete block knee wall. And that enables us to bring that floodproofing, um, layer from under the slab and up the back of the wall. Um, so, da-da-da-da-da-da. Um, also exterior, where we have exterior doors, where, um, we'll be installing, um, well, they'll be fitted to receive plank-style flood barriers, so these would be manually installed. You know, you usually have a little bit of warning when a flood's coming. Um, and then we are raising the elevation of the existing entrance that leads up to the second floor. It also connects to the first floor, but we're raising that landing in that stair to be above the design flood elevation. Taking advantage of some of the work that we're doing, I'm just going to go straight to the renderings. Um, you want to hold one? So taking advantage of the, the fact that we're removing portions of the exterior wall, we will be re-cladding, um, a portion of the building, and here, you can see that we're removing the shingles to indicate entrance to the health center with vertical board and batten. We're also, um, calling for a sunscreen along the southern face of the building, since it is a lot of windows, um, and we think it would be another sign, but an architectural sign, to the entrance of the building. And for the most part, it's already a pretty nice-looking building, and we don't want to, we didn't feel like we needed to reinvent the wheel, but we did want to give people a, a clue that there's somebody new here, and we're, uh, we hope you like it. Yeah. Should I put this back?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, excuse me, is that the conclusion of your presentation?
Few more slides, I'm just going to move these out of the way.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You can go to the next one, thanks, Charlene. So we have, um, had some meetings before being here this evening. Um, prior to, to filings, we had several, uh, pre-application, pre-permitting informal meetings. Uh, we met with all of the town, uh, department head staff to get technical input on the project. Um, we met, then had some follow-up breakout meetings with, uh, individual staff, including the board of health agent, and I know she submitted comments to the planning board. Um, we met with the town planner, both your former and your current town planner, about the project. Um, Outer Cape has met, I think, twice informally with the board of selectmen, just to update them on the project, recognizing that this might be of community interest. And obviously, we met informally with you all in January. Um, in addition, uh, last fall, we met with the Cape Cod Commission staff, just to review the project with them and confirm that, that no commission review, mandatory commission review was required. Um, they did issue a letter, uh, dated November fifteenth of last year, indicating that this is not a change of use, as they define that term under their regulations, so that no mandatory Cape Cod commission review is required, and I believe you have a copy of that in your files. And then, um, we met last week with the Harwich Conservation Commission, because we are doing work to this, I'll be minor, but work to the site within the flood zone. Um, we filed for a request for determination of applicability. Uh, the Conservation Commission last week, uh, voted to approve, uh, that request, issuing what's called a negative determination of applicability, which is actually, means they've signed off on the project. So we've completed that review process as well. Next slide. So in terms of the relief that we're asking, uh, for, from you all this evening, um, we filed for a special permit to allow for the medical clinic use, which is allowed in this district, but in that the use is occupying more than seventy-five hundred square feet, albeit within an existing building, your bylaw requires a special permit, and then site plan, uh, special permit review, uh, with, uh, some waivers, and I'll go through these quickly in, in more detail. Next slide. So first, the, the special permit for the medical clinic, as I mentioned, this is allowed in the district, but, um, is over seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, we respectfully submit that the criteria for issuance of a special permit is met. Um, the criteria that's set out in, uh, three twenty-five fifty-one of the bylaw, uh, speaks to noise odor hours, um, these will be less than the prior use of a market, um, and, and I think won't have any impacts to, uh, the neighborhood. Um, this is reusing, uh, an existing building, adding vibrancy, as Virginia just described, to an existing structure. There are pedestrian and vehicular improvements, um, providing for the act- structure. There are pedestrian and vehicular improvements providing for the access along the front of the building, accessibility improvements throughout the site. There is a minor decrease in impervious coverage with the site. So Virginia mentioned some of the areas that were being, where the pavement was being removed and planting beds were being established. It's about two hundred square feet less impervious coverage under proposed versus existing conditions, facade improvements, the existing systems, the septic systems and the drainage systems are adequate and can be used with the redevelopment, the reuse of the project. There's language from, or comments from your town engineer speaking to stormwater that are in your packet and also from the Board of Health Agent regarding the septic systems. There are some very minor repairs to the septic systems and that was one of the things that we met with the Board of Health Agent to review and are prepared to incorporate. In addition, the flood mitigation improvements and as Pat spoke to, there's a real need within the community for this use. On the site plan special permit, the bylaw speaks to the Board having the ability to condition and therefore review related to screening of parking or other parts of the premises, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic and drainage, all of which we've discussed this evening. So I'll go right to the waivers. The first waiver, and this is probably the one, this is the one we talked about most at the January meeting, is the parking waiver that we're requesting. So the bylaw gives the Board the ability to vary the required number of parking spaces set out in the parking table if the nature and scale of a proposed use warrant such a change. And we've provided you with parking calculations in the filing. So if you strictly apply what the zoning bylaw requires in terms of parking based on the second floor office and the first floor medical clinic, it would require a total of a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces. There are ninety-six parking spaces proposed on site. One of the questions that I heard was where are these new spaces? There are seven new spaces that are being proposed and where the existing loading area is located on existing impervious spaces. Here, and I'll walk through it in just a moment, we're asking that the Board exercise its discretion to grant a waiver to allow for the project to proceed with ninety-six parking spaces. And I want to first talk about the second floor. Next slide. So for the second floor office space, the strict application of the bylaw would require eighty-four spaces for that floor. And that far exceeds the need for Outer Cape and their demand for that office parking. And I think when you look at the bylaw and how they characterize office use and the required number of parking spaces, this is unique in terms of how that's calculated. So the parking schedule that's set out in your zoning bylaw is one schedule that lumps together professional or administrative office, bank or other financial institution and general business offices. All together is one category. And it requires one space per employee at a maximum shift plus one space per two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. So the calculation is based on both the number of employees on a maximum shift and then also on the amount of square footage dedicated to the use. I think that the per-square-foot aspect of that calculation is based on an assumption that that office space is receiving clients or customers as one would expect with administrative offices, banks, financial institutions, or other general business offices. Here though, Outer Cape's use of the second floor is unique. It's basically a back office. It has uses that I mentioned, call center, IT, HR, that don't receive or experience clients or customers in the same way that a bank or a lawyer's office would. And so since they've been there, Outer Cape has periodically surveyed how much are they actually using the space because the only usage that's in the building right now is the occupancy, the office occupancy of the second floor. And what they found is that they are seeing a range of the high twenties to low thirties parking spaces being utilized by that office space. And they're only, at their maximum shift, expecting a maximum of thirty-six people in that space. So we are requesting a waiver to allow for thirty-six spaces for sort of the office component on the second floor. Next slide. As it relates to the first floor, if you factor in that waiver and you deduct the difference from the hundred and sixty-two parking spaces, the bylaw would allow, would require a hundred and fourteen parking spaces. Here ninety-six are proposed, so there's a difference of just eighteen parking spaces. And based on demand, employee incentives, scheduling, we're asking the Board to waive that eighteen parking spaces. I'll walk through that. So one of the things that we discussed at the informal was this parking. And coming out of the informal with you in January, Outer Cape took a really hard look at its realistic projected use of the building, including the upstairs and the downstairs in terms of staff and patients, and came up with the chart that is on the screen to my left. And that, that chart is intended to depict demand on parking. So if you look at the left side of the chart, the zero to one hundred, that's intended to represent parking demand. And then the bottom of the chart are hours of operation of a typical weekday in the summer when Outer Cape would expect to have maximum occupancy. And you'll see there are three different colors on the chart. The green color is intended to represent administration usage, so basically the second floor. And you'll see that the peak times for that use are between roughly nine to five with a drop at lunchtime as you would expect. What they did looking at their staffing is they've estimated that there would be thirty-two staff at a maximum time on the second floor. Now you recall, I just said thirty-six for the peak for the parking. We were being conservative. But thirty-two is the number that they expect on the second floor. The red color in the middle represents the clinical staff. So these would be staff on the first floor. And also, again, the peak times are nine to five with a drop at lunchtime. And the peak number of employees that they anticipate for the first floor is twenty-seven employees. And then finally, the blue is the patient usage. And the peak times here are roughly ten to two and one to four. At peak, they anticipate twenty-five patients coming into the facility. Now, we recognize when they did the calculation that we needed to do some type of multiplier to that because there could be patients coming in and patients coming out. And that would impact maybe perhaps not who's in the building, but the parking demand. So what Outer Cape did in this chart is they added a multiplier factor of point five to the number of patients to increase the amount of parking demand based on the number of patients that they schedule at the facility. And so the blue numbers on the chart here include that multiplier. So the net result is that the, during the maximum demand would be late morning and early afternoon. And during those times, about ninety-three parking spaces are anticipated to be used on the site. Again, there's ninety-six parking spaces proposed in total. Next slide. Some other factors that relate to the parking. First of all, the bylaw calculation, the way it's done for the medical, it assumes full occupancy of every chair and every medical pod, which is not going to be the case throughout the entirety of the day. In addition, this is not urgent care that's being proposed. So all patient care is scheduled through appointments. And there are some appointments that are left, slots that are left open for walk-in care. So Outer Cape has the ability, if they are seeing an issue, to change the scheduling in order to make sure that there's adequate parking for the facility. In addition, in the summer months, Outer Cape offers some incentives to employees to encourage ride-sharing, carpooling for the office space. They allow for flexible scheduling. So you can work longer hours and only come in four days a week. And Pat has indicated that many of the office employees take advantage of that, which would mean less people across the five days that they're open in the office space. And Outer Cape is, again, willing to consider off-site parking if that's needed. Now, one of the comments that came up at the informal, and we wanted to point that out here because I think that is a possibility, is there is a municipal lot directly across the street. And there's a crosswalk across Route twenty-eight that connects the site across the street to the municipal lot. Again, we're only eighteen spaces short and we don't even know that we would be short. But there is the possibility that people could park across the street if this Board were, you know, comfortable with that. I think there are some unique factors with this use so that it wouldn't be in conflict with the uses that are being considered. And I've been reading about them in the paper across the street at the harbor. First, this facility is not proposed to be open on Saturdays or Sundays, which is when I would expect the municipal parking lot would have its highest demand. So on the weekends, they wouldn't be using the spaces across the street. In addition, weekdays, if you remember the chart that was before you, there was a decrease from five PM, starting really at four, and then five and after, very low demand on site, which is when particularly if there's a restaurant on, across the street or snack shack, and I know various options are under consideration. When that would experience higher demand, the Outer Cape would not be using those parking spaces because that's when they have their lower demand. And then finally, to give the Board some comfort on this, as was mentioned by Virginia during her presentation, there's an area of about thirty-four hundred square feet of first floor space that's been designated as future. At some point, Outer Cape will be probably trying to fit out that space. And we'll need to come back to this Board before they do so. We're willing to have that as a condition. I think it's contemplated in the staff conditions that have been suggested. So there'd be another opportunity to evaluate parking and how it's working before they sought to occupy and fit out that future space. One of the other waiver requirements is for the loading area. As Virginia mentioned, the existing loading area is being brought up to grade. We are proposing closed trash and storage area, but there's no sort of designated loading dock with this. It's not needed. That area is available for ambulance parking. There are no ambulances, this comes up occasionally with these types of uses. There are no ambulance dropping off people at this facility. But in the event that someone is at the facility and needs to be transported by ambulance, there's a special ambulance parking space to give some privacy to that individual to be transported to the hospital. Next slide. Another waiver that we're seeking is for the landscape requirements for the seven new parking spaces. As I mentioned, there are seven new parking spaces that are being proposed on existing impervious area. These seven new parking spaces comply with the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. And we're seeking a waiver from having to provide additional interior landscape parking for those seven spaces. There are landscape improvements, as Virginia mentioned, elsewhere in the site, resulting in a net increase of about two hundred square feet of pervious area as compared to proposed. Two more slides and I'm almost done. And then the last waiver relates to some of the submission requirements. We did not include a drainage plan or drainage calculations because those aren't changing with this proposed use. And there are comments from your engineering department indicating they're comfortable with that. And then we also didn't include an exterior lighting plan. Again, the existing fixtures are proposing to be reused. There was a suggested condition in the staff report that if that changed, any new lighting would have to comply with your requirements. And we're comfortable with that condition. And then the last slide. There are a lot of benefits of this project. We've listed some of them on the screen. This is a substantial reinvestment in the town of Harwich. Outer Cape has received a million-dollar federal grant for this project, which I think is great to get that money and have it invested here in Harwich in addition to the overall cost of the project improvements. This use responds to community need. There's a significant need. I think you have fifty or so letters from members of the public indicating that this is an important facility and it's one that they rely on for their health care. This is an economic driver. There are new jobs being created. Outer Cape anticipates fifteen to twenty new positions that will be created with the project. It also brings people to the community who get their health services. And then they're here and they shop and they dine and they use and visit local businesses. And then local employers also rely on having good health care to attract employees. So there's another economic effect of having this type of care in your community and it being something that employers can cite to, to attract employees to come work for them with this service in the nearby area. In addition, reuse revitalization of the existing building, the reduction in site coverage, the new planting areas, and the flood mitigation, just to name a few. So that concludes our presentation. I just, I do want to acknowledge and thank Charlene for her guidance throughout this project. We have read her staff report. And if you get there tonight, which we hope that you might, we've read her suggested conditions and we're fine with those. So we're happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay, before we go to questions, I would like to ask Charlene to, you know, provide the staff analysis of this proposal.
We did receive forty-nine letters.
Yes.
They're all the same, but from different people.
Would it be possible for you to read one of the letters?
I will be happy to read one of them.
Into the record. Yes, I don't want you to read forty-nine.
Just, we did receive forty-nine letters. Fifteen are from Harwich residents, three are from Barnstable, one from Brewster, seven from Chatham, six from Dennis, four from Eastham, four from Orleans, two from Provincetown, one from Truro, one from Wellfleet, and five from Yarmouth.
Thank you.
Just to show the, the distribution. The letter was actually sent to the attention of both Mr. Brophy and Mr. McCaskill, who's the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. "Thank you for the opportunity to express my support for Outer Cape Health Services, building of an expanded community health center on the ground floor of seven-ten Route twenty-eight Harwich Port. As a patient currently seen at Outer Cape Health Services, Chatham Road, Harwich Site, I am very grateful to see the project coming to your attention for approval and all necessary permitting." I'm just going to say OCHS. "Delivers quality compassionate care. However, they have long outgrown the limited space available at the Chatham Road Health Center site. I am hopeful that the new Harwich Port site will offer greater access to services, room to grow. Each of us deserves the very best, most modern health care possible. This project will allow the space for that to happen. I understand that relocating and expanding the existing site enables OCHS to meet growing health care needs by providing new and existing services to more people, including current patients like me. The new health center will fill a great and unmet need for access to primary health care in the Lower Cape in addition to offering new convenient patient services such as a dispensing pharmacy, lab testing, a WIC office, and a community wellness space, none of which are currently offered at the Chatham Road, at Chatham Road due to space restrictions. Please join me in supporting the not-for-profit mission of OCHS and the positive impact the Harwich Port Health Service, Health Center will have on the lower, excuse me, on the local economy and the lives of regional residents and families in need of reliable access to health care. Outer Cape Health Services longevity and its success bode well for the success of this new health center. I earnestly ask you to endorse the project for the benefit of the town of Harwich and all who will be served by its existence."
Thank you, Charlene. Could you now go into your analysis of the project, please?
As Liza explained, they have met with town staff over the last many, many months to address concerns that we had at the staff level. I do appreciate that. I think it's a very good way for projects to move forward in this community. And it's nice that we avail ourselves, you know, to the public to do that. Little plug for us. We don't always get those. I'm going to run through briefly the comments from other boards and committees and departments. Building has concern with traffic safety on-site in surrounding areas, emergency egress. This basically has to do with when there's construction going on with the existing uses happening on the second floor. I'll address that further in my future comments under planning comments. Engineering in a nutshell, the site is already developed. The existing system is adequate for what is being proposed here. Fire department had no concerns. Conservation, as was noted, they went before the Conservation Commission on the seventh and did receive a negative determination, which is a good thing. Police department has no issues. They do want to ensure, however, that the entrance, the gated entrance at the rear of the property in Hoyt Road has access to it. I know that both the fire and police have been working with the architect and the project engineer to ensure that, that they will have access. The health department has reviewed the application. There are some minor repairs that will be needed to the existing system in order to bring it in compliance. They do know that, however, if in the future the project does go beyond twenty, excuse me, two thousand gallons per day, that further review will be required. Highway had no concerns. Highway had no concerns, and we did not receive anything from the water department. Now to go over my staff comments briefly. Again, they've worked, the staff, the applicant and representatives have worked very closely with town staff to review every aspect of the project. Regarding waivers, I've indicated that waivers requested are reasonable, including the waiver for the parking requirements. I do believe that the applicants have made credible argument regarding the number of parking spaces that will actually be needed, particularly for staff on the second floor. The Harwich parking requirements for office assume that the offices will be visited by the public, thus necessitating the need for parking. In the case of Outer Cape Health, the second floor, I'm not going to go into it. I think that Liza explained it very clearly. And the fact that Outer Cape has indicated that in the summer months, when parking demands are at their highest, Outer Cape will propose incentive to its employees of ride-sharing alternative transportation and exploration of off-site parking. In response to the building commissioner's comment, the applicant has begun discussions with the commissioner to coordinate shutdowns, temporary fencing, protective egress, et cetera, to address his concerns that he has during the construction process. The applicant did seek, as Liza said, jurisdictional determination from the Cape Cod Commission. It was found that it would not trigger a mandatory referral. A special permit was issued by the planning board for the food truck. If approval is given, that should become null and void. I do want to point out one thing, which no one caught, and I'm really surprised. As you know, I do provide you with recommended or recommended votes or votes that you can go on. If you go to the second, the last page, vote on site plan review special permit, item number five. Any changes to site plan or changes of use, other than light industry and manufacturing, obviously I cut and pasted. But what I would suggest is that the wording say, "Any changes to the site plan" or "Changes or expansion of use." That way, if you go to their third phase, that it would have to come back to this board. So "Any changes to the site plan or changes or expansion of use shall be subject to further planning board review and approval." Other than that, at this time, I don't have any further comments. If the board has any questions of me, I'm happy to be of service.
Thank you, Charlene. I would like to open some of the discussion with just a few quick questions that I have, and then I'll open it up to other board members, and then certainly to members of the public that are here this evening. First, this will be sort of a factual question I have just for our edification. I am, tell me whether or not I'm right. I'm assuming since you're leasing the building, and the building is still in private ownership, that the building will still remain on the tax rolls for real estate purposes? Real estate tax purposes?
That's my understanding of the law, yes.
Okay, fine.
Mine too.
Yeah, that's my understanding also, but I just sort of wanted to confirm that that was your understanding. Now to my main concern. My main concern is with regard to the parking. And I completely agree with your analysis with regard to the second floor. And I think it is fair to accept your analysis with regard to the total number of parking, sort of peak parking at 114, which leaves the 18 space deficit. My first question has to go to sort of my understanding. The additional seven spaces that are handicapped, those are not counted in those two, you know, compilation of necessary parking spaces that are in addition to it?
Those are part of the 96 parking spaces.
They're part of the 96, okay. So then, those parking spaces could not be used by either non-handicapped employees or non-handicapped patients or... So that, to some extent, you know, takes seven spaces out of the 96, reducing that to 87 general parking spaces.
Yes.
Okay. So then, the deficit in my mind goes from 18, maybe up to about 25, potentially.
Do you want to comment? Maybe I could ask folks from Outer Cape to comment about usage of the accessible parking spaces.
Yeah, that would be helpful if, you know, and again, if you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. Hi, this is Pat Nadle. I'm the CEO of Outer Cape Health. We actually sort of calculated, we have a parking, handicapped parking at Chatham Road. There are three or four spots in the front, which are always full. So we'd be always full. And so clearly, what we looked at is if we're going to expand the access for greater rooms and greater patient traffic, we felt that that seven would pretty much always be full because the five rooms always have three, the three spots in the front, three to four spots in front are always full. So we did take that into consideration, so that the seven, we feel, would be utilized pretty much 80, 90% of the time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Now on to my sort of main concern. And my main concern has to do with the potential for using parking across the street on the town property. And as you know, and you even mentioned in your presentation, at the present time, the sort of final uses of all of that property is sort of in flux. And there's a lot of discussion about potential restaurants, the number of seats, et cetera, whether or not there'd even be enough parking over there for the uses that are proposed onsite over there. So my concern is that I would, you know, I'm concerned about one of your alternatives for parking management being use of the parking facility across the street. You know, I can see, you know, if you could go to parking management strategies, other off-site lots. I mean, I just did a brief survey today up and down Route 28, and there's potentially two or three other pieces of property that I see that I know are both, you know, either underutilized or not utilized on a year-round basis that may potentially be available for off-site parking. While I don't want to delay this process by requiring, you know, sort of a formal, you know, sort of parking plan to reduce the 114 spaces that you've seen, that we've seen in your analysis to 96 by providing an additional 18 spaces. What I'm wondering whether or not you'd be willing to accept is a condition that would require you to, upon operation of the first floor, reduce the peak onsite parking demand by 18 spaces using either parking management mechanisms, off-site parking, but off-site parking not to include the harbor parking across the street.
Could I respond?
Yes, if you would, please.
A couple of things. First, the parking, and I know you're seeing this graphic for the first night. But the parking, based on what we think the actual usage is going to be, putting aside what your zoning bylaw requires, but what we anticipate the actual parking demand is going to be for the entirety of the site. We're showing peak parking spaces at 93 parking, 93 spots. So there is, we believe, adequate parking onsite. I mentioned the property across the street just as, you know, in the event there's a possibility for overflow, it's right there. And the times when we anticipate this to be at its peak, I would anticipate that not to be at its peak, especially with the facility being closed on weekends. I do have, which I will submit, and I was kind of holding this to see if this is something that the board, where they wanted to go, but we do have correspondence from Tom Kennedy, which I will submit for the record, that authorizes, and I'll read it aloud. It's addressed to Pat Nadle, and it says, "Dear Pat, I understand that Outer Cape is presenting its parking mitigation plan to the Harwich Planning Board next week. Please accept this letter as confirmation of our pledge to offer Outer Cape Health Services' overflow parking at our property at 928 Route 28 as needed throughout the year. Outer Cape Health Services' can count on our continued support." So we are exploring and making arrangements for off-site parking, and what, I can have Pat explain what, how they would envision that working, but essentially, they would have employees park at the off-site lot, have one employee pick up the employees, and then bring them to the site, which is about a mile down the street. So I will submit that for the record, but that is something that Outer Cape has secured from the Kennedys.
Okay, well, that's extremely helpful, and that's exactly the type of thing I'm talking about. But, I mean, again, that's not a proposal that has been accepted and formalized in a legal form.
Correct.
So, I mean, with that in place, would you be willing to accept the restriction of, you know, not using or not reducing the 18 spaces by use of the town property across the street?
Mr. Chairman, we can't do that. It's a public parking lot. We can't restrict these people from using it, or anybody else in town.
No, but Joe, we can turn them down because they don't have enough parking onsite.
Well, that's a different question.
Yes, okay.
But the question of use of the public parking lot is not, we can't restrict the use of a public parking lot.
Okay, fine.
I don't believe.
Then, then I think, then I think what you're saying is that we are then, if we accept the waiver, we are then allowing an option for use of the public parking lot across the street, or we are waiving our, the zoning requirements based on an option that uses parking across the street that is being debated on a day-by-day basis by the Board of Selectmen and by other entities in town? And that's my concern. Yes?
If I may, I do believe that this board does have the ability to indicate to the applicant that employee parking cannot or should not be happening across the street. What you can't control is whether a client is going to park across the street. A client may want to park across the street to enjoy the view, and then walk across the street to go to their doctor's appointment.
But the motion that I'm proposing, or the condition that I'm proposing, has to do with their organization reducing the total parking demand. You know, and basically suggesting certain allowable ways to reduce that parking demand, and only, we're only talking about the onsite parking demand.
If I might, how would you suggest, are you saying that they have to have less seats in the waiting room? I'm not sure how you are suggesting that they would reduce their onsite.
I mean, I think you have suggested it in many ways. I mean, ride sharing, off-site parking.
So you would require a condition that they encourage and incentivize their employees to ride-share, explore off-site parking?
And that would be just for, you know, peak parking demand according to the analysis, which, you know, was presented to us as 114 spaces. Now, if the analysis that you're showing there shows that you're never going to get to 114 spaces, well then, you know, then by that analysis, if that's reality, then you've already reduced it.
Right, so, right, this is what we anticipate is going to be the actual demand plus a multiplier factor for patients, you know, coming in and out at times. The 114 is the strict calculation of your zoning bylaw, assuming the waiver up the second floor.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I think we're probably, you know, I'm in favor of the waiver on the second floor because I understand your argument on that. But I mean, again, my only concern is that I feel uncomfortable voting on a waiver that's going to sort of cloud an issue that the town is dealing with, with parking on the Sacre-Tacit Harbor property. So those are my comments. Now, I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Mary?
Through you too, Charlene. I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Are there any, are there any time restrictions on the parking at Sacre-Tacit Harbor? You know, a two-hour limit?
No, there are not. But it is important to point out that the lower southeast parking is strictly for harbor use, the ramp, water access. So that can't be used by anything other than people accessing the water. So that area is restricted, and I forget how many places there are off the top of my head. But there is no limit to the number of hours. I do believe you're not allowed to park overnight there, if that memory serves me correctly. But other than that, there's no other restrictions.
Okay.
Joe?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, you have that real lock gate on the property. Is there some reason why you're not going to open that up for access and egress?
So there's a condition in the original Board of Appeals decision that that not be used for access and egress. And I think it's probably they don't want commercial traffic on Hoyt Road, and so it's been restricted that it be gated for emergency, and we're not proposing to change that.
And that's why the Knox box.
And that's why the Knox box.
We will install a Knox box here.
That's too bad, because I think that would relieve some of the coming and going at your high-end times. 928 Route 28, is that, as I'm going down 28 to a Chatham, is that on the right-hand side?
Which one?
Left.
Total left.
It's the Zudy building.
It's the Zudy building.
The what?
Zudy.
Right to 40th.
It's our back office.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. I know where they're at. I understand the property. I'm not quite. The other question I had is, and having hollered at my acting chairman, the, you're going to have a public parking lot across the street. And of course, it's not now, but the lower part is going to be all dug out and so forth and so on. And once again, I don't think we can require you to do this. I guess it's more of a request. Those of your employees who choose to use that parking lot, that you would somehow make sure that they use the path down, you know where they're building, the new building there? In fact, it's, they've started on the foundation now, that they would park down in that section of it, and not up in the other section.
Are you talking the northeast corner?
Eastally portion.
The northeast, because you can't park in the southeast.
In other words, what I'm trying to say is, you drive in now, whether or not there's going to be a restaurant there is a question. But as you drive in now to the parking, people who are going to use their boat and so forth and so on come in and park in that area. And so, to the degree that you could, I guess my expression is help the town out, that your folks not park in that area, that they park out on 28 down toward that, where that new building is going to be.
So where are my little mouses going?
Go ahead. Yes, thank you.
Mary?
Can I just, a minute?
Yep.
I have nothing further. I do want to say, I'm thrilled that your facility is going to be there. I think it's a benefit to the town, and we can do, or we should do, whatever we can to make sure it happens.
Mary?
So just one comment, I think to Charlene's point. She's told us we could restrict employee access to using Sacre-Tacit Harbor.
No, you can't. It's a public parking lot.
Joe, could you please let Mary? Joe, please let Mary make her, ask her, make her call.
If Charlene is telling us that we could potentially restrict employee, not general public use, not their clients, but their employee use, I am wondering if you'd be willing to police your employee parking so that even when there is a problem, that you can use your employee incentives to incentivize them to use the off-site parking that I think you folks have an ability to control as opposed to your general clientele coming in? Because we all know your clients aren't going to park down at Zudy. So, understood.
No, no. In fact, we had already envisioned the actual parking on itself, that the employees park farthest away from the door because, you know, you really want your patients to be close and be able to get in and not have to walk, you know. When you consider we're dealing with elders or families, kids with, you know, families with strollers, getting in for pediatrics, things like that, you don't want that. And if that's the case, you know, we would monitor that throughout the day because we're going to hear... know, we would monitor that throughout the day because we're going to hear it at the front desk. That'll be the first thing we hear. So, clearly, we'll know right away that somebody has to mobilize an option. So, we do believe we can do that on a day-to-day basis to be able to sort of minimize that expansion and difficulty finding spaces. Does that help?
It does for me. And through Mr. Chair to your counsel, would you be willing to put a, to put together a draft of a condition that would kind of be suitable for us to just review, to add to our conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to other questions, I just want to ask Charlene a question. When the Downey property was purchased and it went to town meeting, my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be remembering incorrectly, that that property was purchased for the purposes of the expansion of Sacquetucket Harbor?
That's my understanding. I actually was not here at the time.
Okay.
But, from all the presentations and, excuse me, and such that I've been at, that is my understanding.
Yes, and if that, excuse me, Ed, do you, can you clarify that issue? And just identify yourself for the record, please, Ed.
Ed McManus, Harwich resident. As Liza pointed out, I'm also on the Board of Directors of Outer Cape Health, and will actually be chairing their, I'm chairing their Building Committee. But, at the time that that occurred, I was a selectman here in town, and the purchase was made for general municipal purchases, purposes. It was unspecified.
Okay.
Because at the time, there was no specific plan on how it would be used.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah.
Jim?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Early on, I was looking at this and asking a question about parking and drainage and those sorts of things. But, what really strikes me about this, I think it's great for our community. I think it's a really positive proposal. But, Pat, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you a question. The question I have is, how long was it before you outgrew your former location or your current location?
This current location?
Yes.
Oh, probably, gee, I'm not really sure. Probably three, four years.
You outgrew it three or four years ago?
Into, yes. So, you know, we've been there about six, a little over six right now. I think they've moved in. And then, after about three or four years, it became, really began to get tight.
Tight, yeah.
And so, you know, when you think of it, this triples the current size, so that we believe we've got expansion room. You know, before, you know, we think we'll be able to live a life before we have to be thinking about that third pod, which is another eight more rooms.
So, I see, I see that pod, right, in the drawings, and, you know, the renderings have all been great, really. But, are you dooming yourself to having to go through this again in another three or four years? Because I, I mean, the way I look at it is it's going to be more expensive in three or four years than it is now. I mean, why not do it all now? And do we have the room, really, to support what you're trying to accomplish, your mission?
You know, I think we're being very careful not to consider overbuilding. You know, a room, industry standard, okay? So, if you look at a treatment room, industry standard supports 4,500 visits a year.
Yep.
Monday through Friday. So, if you do the math, and we currently have 13 to 15, that's an awful lot of visit capacity we're bringing onboard. So, we believe that that's going to satisfy the community's needs for quite a bit of time, and are really fearful to overbuild.
Yeah.
You know, healthcare is pretty expensive today to have left-thallow space. And so, our concern was, is that we should stop at two. That gives us the 16 exam, medical exam rooms and the two behavioral health rooms. And with 4,500 visits per room, that's a lot of visits.
Yeah.
From a utilization standpoint. So, we feel pretty confident we can sit tight for a bit, and not spend more for square footage that won't generate value. That's helpful, okay?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. It's a really good question.
Okay, any other questions for Al?
So, the food truck is out?
Yes.
Okay, that's, it's not the biggest deal. I just, I just.
Did you eat there a lot? It was one of your favorite places.
I saw that very tongue-in-cheek.
No, as a younger person here in Harwich, I'm, this is a great use of the property. The parking is going to be tight, especially if there is a build-out of that section.
I think so.
But, like, like you said, if the employee mitigation takes place, and frankly, there might be some people who have appointments, and they park at Brax, walk across the street, have their appointment, go back to Brax and have their lunch after, or whatever. So, that might, I'm sure the Brax people aren't thrilled with that.
There's a concern that, there is a proposal.
Yeah.
To put, as this board knows, to put another restaurant on the town property. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but it's currently before.
Right.
The board.
Right.
It's in discussion.
Yep.
Does David?
Yeah, I would.
No, no, no. Does David have anything?
No, I'm going to.
Okay.
Okay, okay. David? David?
Yes?
Do you have any questions or comments? Well, go right ahead.
I think someone asked, I think someone asked a question, you know, I wasn't sure I heard it correctly, about the expansion space on the first floor with respect to their, and was their expansion space in the current facility that you've outgrown, that you used, or?
No.
No.
That essentially fills to max when you go in?
It's filled to max.
Yep.
Okay, so it looks to me like you've got some wiggle room there. That was an excellent question, but I think.
Yeah.
You've given us a pretty answer to the question.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any other questions, David?
No, I do not.
Okay, hearing no more questions from the.
Excellent program.
Yeah.
Having no more questions from the board, I'd like to open it up to the public that is here for any comments or questions that they may have. Okay, Ed, did you want to make any more comments? And again, if you could just introduce yourself again for the record, please.
Ed McManus, and in addition to my other involvement with Outer Cape Health, I'm also a patient. And as many of you remember, for several years while I was a selectman, I went through an extended period of having a hip deteriorating, and spent a lot of time limping to the microphone to respond to questions during Town Meeting floor. And at that time, you know, I was one of those people that used, made use of the handicap parking space in front of the current clinic. So, there is a high demand for that. And to suggest those shouldn't be calculated as part of the provided parking, I think, is improper. And, you know, it's part of life that we have nowadays, especially on the Cape where we have such a large senior population. The demand for handicap parking is extensive. At the Cranberry Festival, which I am involved with, we have the entire parking lot at the community center dedicated to handicap parking because there is that much demand. So, just a comment.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Any other comments or questions from any members of the public that are here this evening? Okay, then, before we go on, I have seen you making some notes there. Were you drafting a motion in response to Mary's comments?
No, but I could certainly work with Charlene. We'd love if the board is inclined to wrap this up this evening. So, I could certainly work with Charlene quickly and try and sketch out a condition if the board would be amenable to that.
If the board's amenable, we could take, what would it take?
Couple minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a recess for five minutes.
Yeah, so then, what I'd like to do is recess for five minutes to give you and Charlene an opportunity to work that out.
Super.
And see if we can get this resolved this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Yep.
He's coming.
Okay, I would like to reconvene this public hearing after our brief recess. And I would like to ask the applicant for a report on the committee drafting of a proposed condition. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us that opportunity. So, what we came up with was that a condition that would state Outer Cape Health Services agrees that employee parking shall not be permitted at the municipal parking lot at Sacquetucket Harbor.
That's fine. Now, Charlene, would that be in the findings of fact, or would that be?
No, that would be a condition of approval on your vote on the site plan special permit.
Okay, fine. Could you, yeah, could you give that to our motion maker here?
I'm not going to make the motion because I'm going to vote against it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, Joe, okay. Don't do that. You do that, and that's not good, because we do need five votes in the affirmative.
I know that, and I think they have a right to use the public parking lot. And I don't think we have a right to restrict it. I really don't. Mr. Chairman, I, it's, the town, and I know what's going on, probably better than most, what's going on over there in terms of what that's finally going to look like. But, I mean, I, well.
I mean, the applicant has agreed to it, and we do, I mean, David's allowed to vote, correct?
Yes.
So, we have one, two, we do have five other members. We have six members of the board here this evening. So, I would propose that we proceed. And, Joe, if you don't feel comfortable making the motion.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, you have to close the hearing first, once you're ready.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm not.
I do believe Mary has.
Mary, do you?
I mean, my comment was just to say to my colleague here that if they've agreed to it, we're really only requesting that they restrict their employees, not the general public, just their employees, which is the one piece that they actually can control. And they're willing to do that. And if they come back to us for another, for a further expansion, everything's going to be all open again anyway, and they'll, if it's not working for them, they'd be able to come back.
Mary, if employee X comes to work on a given day and pulls into the public parking lot, there's not anything anybody can do, including with all due respect, these folks to them.
They're their employers. They can do it.
Oh, they can't. Sorry.
They can make the parking available. Again, you're right, Joe, that there are not going to be enforcement officials standing at the gate to the Sacquetucket Harbor, you know, parking lot, checking on why people are coming in there. But, I think the intent here is that they provide the ability for the employees to park. to park, you know, at a separate location. And I think we have the right, I think we do have the right to require that. Okay.
If they were vehemently against it, I would agree wholeheartedly with Joe, but they understand the issues and the concerns that the community has, as well as, as board members, so.
Right, and they are good community citizens, and they want to continue to be that way, because this is an important facility, both for them and for the town of Howard. So unless there's any further discussion on that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I need to do a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, the public hearing on this matter is closed. I would like to now call for a, a motion with regard to the request for waivers.
Move to approve the following waivers. To approve the waivers as requested based on the fact that the site is existing and additional information is not deemed necessary. One, drainage calculation requirement. Two, designated loading area requirement. Three, drainage plan requirement. Four, lighting details. Five, parking lot landscape requirements for the new parking spaces. And six, overall parking waiver to allow 96 parking spaces where a demonstrated need for 114 parking spaces exists.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second to that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will now call for a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mary?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. The motion carries. I would now like to call for a motion with regard to adopting findings.
Move to, to adopt the proposed findings and, and the following findings of fact. One, the structure and parking area are within the C-V and R-R districts and fronts along Route 28. Two, Route 28 provides for adequate access for the proposed use, as the rear access is for police and fire emergency vehicles only. Three, the access as proposed meets the minimum requi, minimum standards of the zoning court, code. Four, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Five, the use is consistent with the zoning code, code, and will not adversely affect the neighborhood or overall public good. Six, with adequate and appropriate signage, there will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. Seven, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Eight, the site is in an appropriate location for such use. Nine, the applicant has committed to incentives to its employees to ride, share, and/or take alternative means for transportation or work, and will explore off-site parking options. Ten, the applicant has demonstrated that 114 parking spaces would be appropriate for the proposed uses for each floor of the building, medical on the first floor, and office use with little to no visitors on the second floor, and the fact that this will not be an urgent care facility. Eleven, the proposed parking area with waivers will provide sufficient off-street parking, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles, vehicles or pedestrians, and provide adequate lighting for the use.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussions on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I would like to call for a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mary?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. I would now like to call for a motion with regard to site plan special permit.
To approve the conditions, case number PBE 2018-01, for Outer Cape Health Services as applicant, building down the road LLC owner, a site plan review special permit with waivers with certain site improvements and a use special permit for structures greater than 7,500 square feet to establish a medical clinic office. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-51 and 55. The property is located at 710 Route 28, MAP 15, Parcel K2, in the CV and RR zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, and the following conditions. One, the special permit shall comply with all Board of Health and Conservation Commission requirements and reviews. Two, all signage must conform to the zoning court, code. Three, any changes to lighting may require additional review and must conform to the zoning court, code. Four, the special permit issued by the planning board for a food truck restaurant takeout shall be null and void. Five, any changes to the site plan or changes.
Or expansions of use.
For expansions of use, other than.
Yeah, then go to.
Shall be, shall be subject to further planning board review and approval.
And open, Outer Cape Health Services agrees that employee parking shall not be permitted at the municipal parking lot at Saquon Tucket Harbor.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing no discussion, I would like to call for a roll call vote. Uh, David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mary?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, I would now like to call for a motion with regard to use special permits for structure with gross floor area of 7,500 square feet or more.
Move to approve the use special permit pursuant to, uh, 325-51 of the Howard zoning code, code, based on the above findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Do I have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mary?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Good luck, folks.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to turn the meeting now back over to Chairman Larry Brophy.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
Excuse me, we'd like to continue the meeting, so if you could take any ongoing conversations outside.
Jim? You're sitting way back from the microphone. I don't think anybody even heard you.
Sorry about that.
What are your drinks outside?
Yeah, no, I was just asking if you could please continue your conversations outside so we could continue the meeting.
And next, next up on the agenda, if you'd like to stick around for this, this is gonna be the supplemental regulations for marijuana establishment. And the, Charlene? Are you busy scratching away?
I just want to write when you're opening the hearing. Would you like to formally open the hearing, and I would suggest?
That's a public hearing too, I'm sorry.
Yes, that is a public hearing.
Okay, we will formally open the hearing at eight, 8:30.
I'm gonna suggest that you forego reading the actual whole notice into the, the record, as I will be happy to go through it item by item, if you would like me to.
No, that's fine, we can all read. Oh, you want to go through, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I have to go through it.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
As part of a public hearing.
Go right ahead.
But I'll wait, if, I won't.
We'll, we'll waive the proceeding, you can summarize it.
Right, right. But I will say that the article would be to see if the town will vote to amend the Howard zoning bylaw, Article 5, Use Regulation, Section 325-14, supplemental regulations to include a new paragraph R, that would provide as follows. Further to amend Article 2, Section 325-2, word uses and definitions to include marijuana establishment recreational as follows, and further to amend Article 5, Use Regulation, Section 325-13, table of uses, be paragraph four, commercial uses and attachment one, table one, by inserting said use into the use table. So essentially, through you, Mr. Chairman, Section 325-14 supplemental regulations would add a section R marijuana establishments. And backing up a little bit, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, the board held public hearings, it might have been three weeks ago now, or four, to have an outright ban of marijuana, and then also a moratorium on marijuana recreational sales. And it's important to point out that those two amendments, as well as this amendment, do not restrict anyone's right to have marijuana in their own home, and smoke it, and have their, there are six plants each, it has no, nothing to do with that. This is the, this particular bylaw, and the ones discussed previously, are with regard to the actual retail sale of recreational marijuana, so I want to make that very clear. Not, not everybody has been understanding that. So essentially, the change to 325-14 supplemental regulations, again, adds an R marijuana establishments. And it provides for the fact that it would be a special permit pursuant to 325-51 and site plan review.
As a right, large-scale, ground mounted, solar, photo, volcanic, and related.
Photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic.
Voltaic.
And related, so.
It might become volcanic.
I get my mirrors where it's the end of the meeting.
It has been. So a few weeks ago, I made a presentation to you regarding the green communities, and if you require many questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Joe?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes.
Is this property, some of it private, and some of it?
Nope, this is all town.
All town property?
So if you look at the map on the, on the screen, Joe, they, they blow off a lot of carbons, so that when we go to replace those, we need to do it with a more energy-efficient vehicle. And when we're talking a two-wheel drive vehicle, we're only talking 29 miles per gallon for it to count as an energy-efficient vehicle.
But those all came from the police department.
And you can't, we can't do that anymore.
Yeah.
If we go this.
No, but I, I think what I, how much will this cost, the, the town?
The town, it would cost us nothing, because what other communities have done is actually put this out for RFP, a request for proposal. And the only cost that would be involved is the legal cost to do the lease necessary to draw it up, so that, similar to what we have right now.
Yep.
We have the solar farm right there now, next door, and that, we get credits from that, we get the usage of the electricity at a reduced rate, so we're benefiting from the existing solar field that's there. This could go to not just help the town, but if private citizens or, or businesses, especially along Queen Anne Road, that may be, have high energy uses, they may be able to tie into this, and there may be a nominal kind of fee set up, but that, that is for future figuring out and deciding how you want to do that. There's a lot of models out there on how that's been done.
Charlene, in, in the existing solar farm, how many panels are in there?
I, I don't know. Larry, do you know? Larry Cole is here, he's a member of the Energy Committee.
I wondered why he was here.
We have another member.
It was, I was here to see a marine in action.
Ah!
You won't find that here.
Yes, you will.
I'm sorry, what, your question, sir?
How many, how many panels are in the solar farm up by, up at the recycling?
It's about 15,000, that's a four-megawatt installation. It's far more power than the town uses, but we get both the savings from using the power that's generated, plus the net metering credits.
Yeah.
Okay.
And as Charlene has pointed out, this could be developed by a, a private developer who creates something called a solar garden.
Yeah.
And, and connects users. So it's, it's not related to municipal use, okay?
And, and I, I guess the other question I have is, if in fact the town wanted to do it, do it themselves with this magical $150,000 thing?
No, they can't. What, and I, I'll explain why. The $50,000.
You don't have to explain it, if we can't.
No, 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 I think it's important, it is, it's a very good question. $150,000 is not for energy creation, it's for energy reduction.
It's an incentive.
It's an incentive to reduce our carbon footprint.
Right.
The, the photo array that we have now is not an energy reduction, it's a creation of energy. But there isn't a reduction in the overall energy that we're actually using.
Okay.
We're still using the same amount of energy, so.
That's the reason for the fleet, the change in the fleet.
Exactly. And that's just one of the things. We're also be looking at a stretch code. Under this, the building code, there's an appendix for what's called the stretch code, which is a little, little bit more, I don't want to use the restrictive. It, it'll, it requires a little bit more on the design for a home, and it has to be hers-rated, and you have to have it inspected by a hers, I forget what hers stands for at the moment, but, but the additional cost involved is nominal. Because the stretch code is becoming more and more like the building code, and it's only, only for new construction, not if you're putting an addition on your home, if you're building a brand-new, single-family, two-family dwelling, it triggers it, or if you're building a 100,000-square-foot commercial building, which I don't think we're gonna be seeing any of those.
Not this week. Go ahead.
Well, I just, to point out, as, as Charlene has, has mentioned, there are five criteria that we have to satisfy. Two of them have to go to town meeting for a vote in May, in order for us to be able, eligible to apply in the fall for, for the grants. And the grants are to be used for energy efficiency in municipal facilities, and it will pay for some things that cannot be funded out of the CAPE-like Compact Energy Efficiency Program, which we've made great use of. When I was a selectman, this first came to the town in about 2009, and at that point, we were concerned with the stretch code for construction, and with fuel-efficient vehicles. In the case of vehicles, there wasn't much to choose from, there's a whole lot to choose from now, and whole categories are left out. The difference between the stretch code and the base code from the state has narrowed considerably. I sat in on a staff meeting, and the building commissioner said, it's not a problem, and in fact, the HER ratings are even helpful to builders. And the other point regarding that is, there's an energy efficiency standard that gets upgraded every three years by the state, that has to be complied with, that narrows the gap further. So, we're, this is another member of, of our committee, Terry Hayden. We're, we're delighted and excited that the town is pursuing the green community status, and hope you'll be, act accordingly. Thank you.
Larry, oh, no, don't let him talk us out of it, that's fine. You gotta know when to hold him.
Just a quick question. If, if our production exceeds our need now, what do we do, sell the over?
Yes, we sell the excess, and we share in.
Credits.
The, the revenues from that. Thank you. Okay?
This is, this is. Having said that.
And just point out, right now, only Provincetown, Truro, Wellfleet, and Mashpee. Is Mashpee, Mashpee's a green community, so there's only four towns on the Cape that are green communities. Just want to point that out.
I can't read it.
It's on the back here, Joe.
Can you read it?
Oh, it's on, it's on your PowerPoint. That's why you have your PowerPoint.
I'll read it.
Yeah.
Move, move to approve the proposed zoning article as amended, and to end.
And to send.
And to send it to the Board of Selectmen for referral back to the planning board.
So I was to comply with the provisions.
So let's comply with the provisions of Math General Law, Chapter 405A, Section 5.
Forty A, Section 5.
It's also on the back of your PowerPoint. It's also in the back of your PowerPoint.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. David?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye? Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Alan, did you second it, or did Mary?
I seconded.
Okay, having said that, we're moving right on to briefings and reports. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
It was electrifying.
Welcome back, Larry.
Okay, briefing, does anybody have any briefings? Jim?
Okay, I'd just like to report that the Community Preservation Committee has voted with regard to the recommended, recommended applications that are gonna be funded and sent to town meeting. We, those have been put into the language for the warrant and submitted in accordance with the deadline last Friday.
Superb.
Good.
Mary?
Nothing more to report.
Nothing more to report.
No me.
No? Hearing no further reports.
Motion the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McCollum and seconded by everybody at the table. David? You approve, you approve of the meeting to adjourn? David does.
I gave his chuckle as a yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes for me? Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan? Thank you, everyone.